Hi, everyone. My name is Perry Williams. I work at the Maine Downtown Center. I just wanted to acknowledge that this webinar series is being brought to you by the Maine Department of Economic and Community Development Housing Opportunities Program, the Maine Downtown Center and Build Maine. Also a reminder that we are recording so that we can disseminate this later. And to please put yourself on mute before we get started. And there will be time for some Q and A later where you can take yourself off mute. But until then, please stay muted and I will go ahead and hand it off to Cara for some intros.
Everybody, thanks so much for being here. We're really excited to kick off this webinar training series. And to start us off, we're going to turn the mic over to Hillary Gove from the Department of Economic and Community Development. And we thank them again for the Housing Opportunities Program grant that has helped make this project possible. So before we start with the Maine Place Code Library Workshop, Hillary is just going to take a minute and say a few thanks. Thanks, Hillary.
Hi, everyone. My name's Hillary Gove and I'm one of the two Housing Opportunity Program coordinators within the Maine Department of Economic and Community Development. You also may have met my colleague Ben April. So my program provides technical and financial assistance to municipalities to increase housing opportunities across the state of Maine. So when I say financial assistance, I mean, we have grants to support the work that you all are doing. Cara mentioned how Door Yard was given one of our grants, or excuse me, Bill Made was given one of our grants. But we've also had numerous municipalities across the state that have received funding as well as different service providers. Some of our examples of projects that towns have taken as part of this grant program is master planning activities, ADU promotional activities, housing inventory and site suitability reports, pre-approved designs, zoning and land use changes, and housing toolkits. So if you would like more information, I'll put my email in the chat if you want to learn more about our grant programs. Also, just quickly before we jump in, I know that many of you may have heard about a new piece of legislation that recently passed in the legislature known as LD 1829, or 1829. This is a bill that expands on LD 2003 and places requirements on municipalities to additional land use changes to allow for increased density and more housing. This bill, although municipalities don't have to comply with the law until either 2026 or 2027, we know that it's on a lot of people's minds right now. And so I just want to say that we are about to undertake rulemaking and updating our guidance document to support municipalities with this process. So that will take a few months. But certainly, as we're doing rulemaking, questions come up about how LD 1829 impacts your community. Please reach out. We'd be happy to answer your questions. And we're here to support you as you learn about this new law and start implementing it in your own community. So, thanks, Cara. I'll turn it back to you.
Great. If people have questions for Hillary, feel free to throw those in the chat. And we'll move on to the main presentation. With us today, we have Ben Frye, who's with the Town of Newcastle, and Ivy Van, who's a planner. And I'll let them more fully introduce themselves.
Great. I'll get us kicked off. I'm going to share my screen here real quick, so bear with me as I get it loaded up. All right. Can everybody see that? Can everybody hear me? Yes, good. Wonderful. All right. So, welcome, everyone. This is an introduction to the Maine Place Code Library, Maine Place Code Library 101. Hold on a second. Here we go. Hi, as Cara said, my name is Ben Frye. I am listed here as the Digital Innovation Lead, which is kind of funny. I am the tech guy on the project. But I am also a Board of Selectmen member in the town of Newcastle. And I also have the dubious distinction of being the Chair of the Planning Board in Newcastle. And I've been the Chair for five years administering the Newcastle Code, which is a variant of the Place Code. So I'll talk more about that later. Ivy, do you want to introduce yourself?
Sure. I'm Ivy Van and I work all over New England and primarily in small towns, helping them figure out why they can't have nice things and what we can do to make it possible for their towns to provide more housing choice and better walkability and simply be nicer places to live by tackling the parts of their code that are pretty much preventing them from having nice things. I've used the Place Code three or four times, various iterations of it, to write code for places. And I think it's a great tool and I'm thrilled to be here to talk to you about it. Okay, take it away, Ben.
All right, excellent. So, quick overview of today's agenda. We're going to do Part One. We're going to do an introduction to the Place Code. We're going to do a brief history of zoning. And we're going to unpack what problems the Place Code is trying to help solve. We'll take a quick 10, five to 10-minute break for some questions and answers, if there are any at that point, and a five-minute stretch break. We just thought asking everyone to sit down for two hours straight was a little too much. I know myself, I need to stand up and walk around for a second. So we'll do that. Then we'll come back for Part Two of the presentation where we'll explore the Place Code itself. I'll have a small little example at the end and show you some resources and how to get involved in the Maine Place Code Library, if you so desire, how to sign up, so on and so forth. And then we'll save, if we can, another five to 10 minutes at the end for questions and answers at the very end. So that is the agenda. So, moving into exactly the overview, like I said, we're going to do an introduction. We'll talk about the history of zoning. Ivy's going to handle that. So I just wanted to give a quick note here that because there's two presenters in this, we're going to have to hand off sharing a screen. So bear with us when we do that. We're going to try and make it smooth. We've practiced a little bit, but if it gets rocky, just bear with us. We'll dive into some of the core features of the Place Code, including districts and building types, components, roof types, and building groups, which is a new innovation for rural and other types of applications. We'll go over that. Again, I'll show you a little practical application and then resources and next steps, like I said. So what is the Maine Place Code Library? So the Maine Place Code Library is intended to be a tool. It is a zoning ordinance. It can be taken in whole or in part. And I want to emphasize that. I'm going to try and remember to emphasize that several times as we go through this. It's designed as a library because, and we wanted to put it out that way so that people understand, you can check out, like you would check out a book, you can check out parts of the code that you like, that you maybe want to adapt into your own communities, that will fit into your own ordinances. You can take it in whole or in part. And you can find someone, you know, through us or someone to help you adapt that to your community, or you can work with your own town. And we're going to be providing more information as we go along about different ways to package up the Place Code to solve different problems, such as how do you address missing middle housing in neighborhood districts? Or how do you create a lightweight version of the Place Code for small rural communities that maybe don't need, you know, everything that the Maine Place Code has in it? It is quite large. I think if you were to print it out, it would be very, very big. I haven't done it myself. It's going to be over 400 pages with all the graphics and everything built in. So that's that. Why, I want to go to the next slide here. Why a digital-first approach? So zoning codes typically are very paper-dependent. Everyone thinks about them as something you print out. And I think we wanted to make a distinction here that the idea is that you can take parts of this and integrate it, like I said, into your code or into another online platform like MuniCode or Eco360 or something. It's constantly being worked on. So the idea that you can have a library of code parts out there, anyone can look at, anyone can take parts or participate. It's hosted on Notion. If you're not familiar with what Notion is, it's an online organization program. And we settled on that because it makes it very easy to do two things. One, organize the code, but it also, and work on the code, make changes and adaptations, but also allows people to come in and leave comments and view those comments. And then we take those comments and we integrate them into future updates in the code. So we wanted to have that ability to have the collaboration effect. So that Notion works wonderful for that. And I think I've covered all of that. So it is licensed, the Maine Place Code Library is licensed under a Creative Commons license. And so what does that really mean? We wanted to not have this be something that was, we wanted it to be very clear, I should say, that this is something we want you to take, parts of it, all of it. We want you to steal it. And I know that's a funny way to talk about codes, but we all know that when we go to work on towns' ordinances or we're looking at redoing something, we have an idea, maybe we can incorporate this part from this town, this part from that town, because they're doing some really cool stuff over there. And so we all naturally borrow from each other anyway. And we wanted to make clear, this is totally open source. We want to promote widespread adoption of these ideas with no impediment. So the Creative Commons license that we've chosen makes it freely available to use for anyone, including consultants who want to use it for commercial purposes. You can take it, you can sell it, you can package it up, you can modify it. The interesting thing about this license type is that it does require you to do two things. One, credit the original source, which is the Maine Place Code Library. And then any adoptions or innovations that you make to the library itself need to be put back into the open source world. So while you can use it for commercial purposes, those changes that you've made need to carry the Creative Commons license forward so that it maintains that openness. So at this point, I'm going to turn off my screen share and I'm going to hand it over to Ivy, who's going to walk you through some of the history.
Okay, I am going to take over screen share. And here we go. All right, everybody can see me. And so I'm going to start talking about how we got here, why we thought it was important to create a new way of dealing with zoning. And so this did not start with the five or six of us, obviously. This is a long history. So zoning came about as a way for local governments to figure out what goes where. And the reason that we did that was because we wanted to be sure that we were keeping noxious uses away from places where people lived. It was originally based on the idea of health and safety standards. And if you look at the history of zoning, you will see that being the basis for a lot of zoning. So right now, most of us are really familiar with what's known as Euclidean zoning, which divides a municipality into zones. Each zone has its own set of rules about what can happen there and what kind of buildings are there. Mostly, it has to do with the usage. Before we had zoning, towns evolved in pretty much the same way all around the world. You had mixed-use patterns, people worked out of their homes. You had factories, homes and businesses next to each other, sometimes in the same building. You had walkable integrated neighborhoods because that was the only way to get around. Most people couldn't afford a horse, if there were horses. And there was, you know, not much regulation of the building unless you build on someone else's land. And then it was a lawsuit. And those go all the way back to Mesopotamia. One of the early translated documents we have from the Fertile Crescent is actually a land use lawsuit about somebody building a building on land that allegedly was not theirs. So, you know, it was a free-for-all and it worked kind of okay. But we did have issues with industrial pollution in residential areas. Obviously, those happened in the poorer areas, no surprise there. People who couldn't afford to live away from the copper smelter, lived near the copper smelter with all of those issues. You had fire hazards, the Great Fire of London, overcrowding in tenement districts because, you know, those were the cheap places and that's where people who couldn't afford much lived. And there was not enough light in the air, particularly as places began to industrialize. The free-for-all worked fine when you had little agricultural villages. But as you had manufacturing and the satanic mills of Northern England, it became clear that this was not working as well as we needed it to. So the zoning that we're all most familiar with, of course, is Euclidean zoning. This starts around the turn of the last century, late, the late 19th century, early 20th century. We had the challenges of urbanization. We had a lot of immigration, a lot of new immigrants coming. Those people had to live someplace. New York City is a great example of this. We had the tenements there, which were, you know, they housed people, but not in any kind of reasonable way. There was not enough light there. You had industrial growth, you had pollution from that. So in 1916, New York adopts the first comprehensive zoning ordinance, which is, again, based on the idea of health and safety. The idea that you wanted your places to not be poisoning people. That was what we were talking about then. In the 20s, we had rapid adoption of zoning. We also had a federal push to have places adopt a comprehensive zoning. That was Herbert Hoover's big project after the dam. He didn't actually build the dam. But Herbert Hoover was behind this whole idea of uniform zoning codes. Berkeley created the first single-family residential-only zones. And that's important because that decision of Berkeley, which was allowed to happen, got us into kind of the mess that we find ourselves in now. 1926 is the Supreme Court decision of Ambler Realty versus the Village of Euclid, Ohio. It was decided in favor of the Village of Euclid. That's why this is Euclidean zoning. And it says that, yes, it is legal for towns to create zoning, which in effect codified exclusionary zoning. Why are we not going forward? Go forward. So it upheld the constitutionality of zoning. And Justice Sutherland's opinion said, yes, you could separate incompatible uses. But the really interesting thing about Euclid is the incompatible uses that we are separating are not a tannery or a copper smelter or a brickyard or even a store. The incompatible uses were single-family residential and multifamily residential. Multifamily residential was declared to not be the same use as single-family residential. Multifamily residential was described as a pig in the parlor. You did not want to have multifamily in your single-family residential zone because those people were not you. And it was the, it made obvious that one of the uses of zoning was to impose class and color segregation. It was about segregating people who lived in apartments from people who lived in single-family houses. And the people who lived in single-family houses were somehow better citizens than people who lived in apartments. And if you read, I had to read the whole description, the whole decision. And it's actually quite horrifying. If you have time, I recommend that you go read the Village of Euclid versus Ambler Realty decision because it's one of the things that got us where we are now. And so Euclidean zoning is the kind that we all are used to. It has a map. You have things just cut up into various kinds of distinct zones, residential, and of course, residential that's only single-family and residential that allows multifamily. Just as an aside, as recently as a couple of years ago, something like 85% of all residentially zoned areas in the United States were single-family only, which is problematic. And you have a land use table that says each zone allows these specific activities and these specific activities are prohibited. And the land use codes, the land use tables, I'm sure you have seen them, are things, you know, they list every possible thing that you might want to do in that district. So you'll have Turkish baths, also baths Turkish, tea rooms, and then, you know, small restaurants. Because if it wasn't listed in the code, it wasn't permitted. You ended up having these tables that had, you know, hundreds and hundreds of uses that were allowed. You also have dimensional regulations that control setbacks, height limits, floor sizes, floor area ratios. And because we, you know, use zoning for some pretty unsavory uses, the dimensional regulations are another place where we see zoning used as a way to continue segregation, both by race and by class. Because if you have to have a big house, a big lot in order to build your house on, that house is going to be more expensive and the people who live in that neighborhood are going to be more like each other than not like each other. Euclidean zoning spread all through the first half of the 20th century and again promoted by Herbert Hoover and the federal government. The Standard State Zoning Enabling Act, that's Herbert Hoover's act, that's in 1922. The widespread adoption of the automobile made separating things far from each other more reasonable because if you could drive to it, it didn't have to be near to you. FHA lending policies that said that the feds would not loan you, would not underwrite your mortgage unless the place that you were building your house in had zoning. And the post-war suburban development boom. I mean, I'm sure you've all read The Color of Law and know how the zoning rules and in concert with the fair housing rules and the lending policies serve to encourage suburbanization, large lots, separation by class and race, all of those terrible things. And by 1970, you know, nearly everyone had some form of zoning. I have a friend who says that every town along the east coast of the United States and about as far as the Mississippi River has the same terrible Euclidean zoning code that doesn't actually reflect anything on the ground in their town. It was sold to them by a guy out of the backseat of a Ford Fairlane station wagon. And if you have read more than one zoning code, you will see that Patty's probably right. That does seem to be where they all came from. And people would adopt a zoning code that didn't reflect what was actually on the ground. They would adopt an explicitly suburban pattern, even if they had a thriving downtown with no minimum lot sizes. They had close-in neighborhoods with small lots and varying sizes of houses and, you know, some small multifamilies, all those things we talk about as the missing middle. They had those things, but we adopted zoning that didn't reflect it. There were some challenges as this went along. Courts would strike down ordinances that they considered to be overly restricted. There were always constitutional questions about, well, could you say that you couldn't do this or you had to do that? Technical complexity, that's our guy with the Ford Fairlane station wagon. Places, particularly places that were not well-funded, smaller towns, didn't have the kind of technical support they needed to really understand what they already had and what they wanted to have going forward. So they tended to adopt a generic code that made their existing places that they loved irreproducible and bound up in rules that made it hard to build a garage on your lot. When I was working as a newspaper reporter in the early 1980s, I watched a town in southern New Hampshire, which shall remain nameless, essentially zone itself out of existence. It had a great little village. It had a general store and a gas station. The library was there. They had lots of varying sizes. They had, you know, they had some multifamilies, some small multifamilies. And they adopted a zoning code because they were terrified that they were going to have too many schoolchildren. They adopted a code that made that village entirely non-compliant. So if you wanted to build a garage, you had to go to the zoning board and hope that your neighbors liked you well enough that they didn't go and, you know, create a big fuss and make it impossible. It was really, I didn't have the language to describe what was happening, but even then, I knew that was a bad plan. One of the other oppositions that has always been a concern is landowners arguing that, well, zoning is just a taking. In general, they lose when they go to court and claim that, but it's been, you know, a thing that has been an issue. And of course, things like the village, non-conforming uses, pre-existing uses, pre-existing land use, development patterns, create dilemmas. If you've adopted a suburban zoning code that requires an acre for a house lot, but you have parts of your town where that's not what's on the ground, then that becomes complicated and not great. So it's 90% of municipal codes are based on a Euclidean code, although that is changing. There was recently a study that says, well, actually, it turns out that of the new codes that have been adopted in the last 10 years, about 75% of them have some elements of a form-based code. You know, this is what we're working with. So what we are beginning to think about is using the strict separation of uses in those use tables and the suburban lot and yard standards are not working for us. It's not building the kind of places that people want. And from that, the whole idea of the form-based code emerged. And the idea of the form-based code, well, this is Euclidean zoning ideology, this is used base. And this is what you get with it. You get car dependency, inefficient land use, increased infrastructure costs. So the response to this is to create form-based codes, which talk more about, and every place looks the same, we, you know, we've all seen this. This is what you get if you have a strict Euclidean code that prioritizes moving automobiles and larger lot sizes, a varied suburban development pattern. And the form-based code was developed in response to that. So the idea of the form-based code is, let's figure out what we want our place to look like. And we do it by picking a place that we like and you measure it. Form-based code is based on metrics, you know, how wide is the street? How tall are the buildings? How close are they to the back of the sidewalk? All of those things, because it turns out that those are the things that make a place feel the way they feel. So you can choose a part of your town that you like and would like to have more of it. And you can analyze it and see what is, you know, what you have there. And the origination of this was a graduate study of two neighborhoods in New Haven and New Haven, Connecticut. And Andrea Stwani looked at these two neighborhoods, one of which was doing really well. And this is in the 70s when New Haven was kind of a terrible place in some places. There was one neighborhood that was doing pretty well and, you know, was safe and sustainable and well-maintained. And then there was another neighborhood that was kind of a mess. And he measured them and discovered that there were actual physical characteristic differences between the successful neighborhood and the unsuccessful. that there were actual physical characteristic differences between the successful neighborhood and the unsuccessful neighborhood. And that, from that comes the idea that we can create places if we pay a, attention to how they feel to us, how close the buildings are, how tall they are, all of those things. So form-based code prioritizes the buildings and the public spaces between the buildings, rather than segregated land uses. Because by and large, unless you're running a copper smelter, uh, the things that go inside the building are, don't really deeply affect how the place feels. There are examples that are not that, but by and large, if you get the building scale right, you get it human scaled, then the place is going to be a good place. Form-based codes prioritize walkability, mixed uses, so that you don't have to get in a car to go buy a quart of milk, that when you take your mother-in-law's car keys away, she's not trapped at home, she can walk downtown and buy dog biscuits, all of those things and, you know. Uh, the, and in the creation of a distinct community character. So form-based codes define development primarily by its form with use being secondary. You know, some people say, oh, form-based code, they don't care anything at all about the use. That's not in fact true. We do care about the use, but we also care deeply about the form of the building and the form of the street. Um, and form-based codes are based on what's known as the transect. The transect is a, an idea that comes from um, biological science, where you're looking at what kinds of things are along this continuum. Um, when I was studying marine biology for a hot minute, that was one of the things we looked at was, okay, you had the zone right next to where the water came up and went down every day with the tide. And then you came in a little bit further and you had the zone where the tide didn't come in, but where it was still quite close to the water. And then you moved up and there were animals and plants that lived there. And then you moved a little further away and you had a different set of animals and plants. So the, the form-based code is based on that idea of things belong where they belong, where they are on the range of, from the natural zone to the downtown core zone. So um, in the downtown core zone, a skyscraper might be an appropriate thing. Um, in the, in the T-two rural zone, that skyscraper would be out of place. So when we look at places, we think about where they are on that continuum between the natural zone and your downtown. And your downtown, whatever it looks like, that's your densest place. And the question is, you know, are you happy with that density? Would you like a little more density? Do you want to let that get denser over time? And we look at all those things as we think about how we want to write our code. Often, we're trying to, as Ben mentioned earlier, we're trying to let our currently single-family neighborhoods evolve over time by allowing duplexes and triples and backyard cottages and cottage courts. So we're writing the code not to reflect what's on the ground right now, but what we want to develop into. So um, thinking about where your place is and what you want it to grow into over time is a big part of thinking about this. Um, and this is, you know, how it is in practice, and you can have special districts um, that have separate rules for them that I worked on a place that had a fairground district, for example, and it had special rules for that. Most of us in New England, we don't get past T-five because, you know, that's all the density that we have or want. Um, we don't get to T-six, um, and that's okay. Um, so in order to start writing a form-based code, using the place code or any other tool, but using the place code, you have to do a few things ahead of time. You need to do the work to write a good comprehensive plan and adopt it. Because that's the place where you have that conversation with the people who live in your place about what do they want, what do they not have now that they would like to have. Um, so that gives you the information you need to align your new code with those long-term community goals. For example, um, I worked in New Market, New Hampshire, and one of the goals was, we were working on the main street spine. And one of the goals was, they wanted that main street spine, which is the state highway, to develop like the core that's in the middle now. They didn't want, as places up and down developed, they didn't want traditional suburban sprawl. They didn't want big box stores. So we wrote code that says, you know, this is your maximum building size. This is, you know, you don't have a minimum frontage so that you can have little skinny stores as well as wider stores. So you can have residential uses there. All, and this is how they have to meet the street to pre-produce that sense of enclosure that you have now in the existing downtown village center. You, as the town grows, it will grow in the same pattern. And you'd have to do, there's a lot of talking to people that is part of that. You need to do good community engagement, there are all kinds of tools available, and you need to use all of them. You need to make sure that you're not just talking to the householders on that street. You need to talk to renters, you need to talk to people who uh, maybe are not living there yet. You know, you need to open that up so that you get as much information about what people really want. And that will allow you to create a code that really does reflect the wishes of the town and has a hope of getting adopted, um, which is, as you all know, one of the things that has to happen. Um, and if you're lucky, you do all of that work and uh, we can adopt the code and things go well. I mean, Ben Frye's had that experience in his town. I've seen it happen in some of the towns I've worked in and others of the other towns, not so much, but we press on. So we're going to pause here and I am going to stop sharing and hand it over to Ben. Ben, you ready to share?
Yeah.
Okay, take it away, Ben. And we'll do questions and answers. If you have a question, unmute yourself and raise your hand waiver. And um, we'll try to answer them. We're gonna not spend forever um, here, but we will spend some time if you have questions about what I've just said. Um, and then we'll take a five-minute stretch break and then Ben will talk about the structure of the main place code. All right. Anybody questions? I don't actually see any questions. No questions. All right.
No question.
No question so far. Um, and I'm looking at the chat. Um, and we do not have any questions in the chat. Okay, so we're going to start the timer for a five-minute stretch break. And then when we come back, Ben will talk about um, the structure of the place code, how it's, how it lives um, on the Notion site and why it lives there. All right.
Carrie, I saw you talking. Did you have anything to say before we break for a quick second?
Nope.
Okay. All right, um, I'm just gonna step away real quick um, and get a drink of water. And uh, I'll be right back to uh, start section two.
Okay.
Alrighty, so been a couple of minutes. I'm gonna, can everyone see my screen here and hear me okay?
Yep.
Okay. All right. Well, thank you Ivy for getting us started on the history of zoning and compare and contrast with Euclidean zoning versus um, form-based coding. I think at this point, I'd like to tell some stories before I dive right in. And the reason why is because um, I think many of you might be asking yourselves, why, why, why are we here? Why, why are form-based codes? Why are you talking about form-based codes? Why are they important? Um, we know how they're different from Euclidean zone, uh, Euclidean zoning. But um, you know, what, why is this important to me? So I just want to tell the story a few minutes about my town, town of Newcastle. Uh, and, and what was going on and why we ended up where we ended up. We do now have a form-based code that is based on the place code. And we got there, very long process unfortunately. But going back um, years and years, we, like Ivy said, were one of the small towns in New England that adopted uh, a traditional use-based zoning code back in seven, seventy-one or seventy-two. And over the years, it grew and grew. It was uh, patched, Band-Aids were added. I'm sure this is a familiar story to a lot of folks. Until um, you know, other things, other things, other modules and other considerations were added in. And finally, we stepped back and we looked at it and it was a, a six-hundred-page binder um, of, of rules and regulations, many of which contradicted each other, were very unclear in their wording about um, what they were intending to do and what they were intending to regulate. And when you really began to unpack all that, um, it became clear that the, the folks that we inherited uh, our zoning from that, that instituted it back in the, in the early seventies, their aim was really to discourage any kind of development in the town of Newcastle. Uh, and we'd gotten a bad reputation in Lincoln County for being, you know, um, a very expensive place to live for tax purposes uh, and also a place that was unfriendly to business. And we wanted to change all that. Uh, we recognized that there was a, a, a time to um, invest in changing the narrative so that we could, we could, you know, grow more, broaden our tax base, um, protect our future. And so we engaged with some consultants and we spent several years, um, unfortunately, working both with them and I had a large committee at the time, which I'm very grateful for. I had thirteen volunteers who, I'm not joking, they met every week for at least two years. And we went over and over and over all these things. It was wonderful. Um, it was a wonderful experience to work with all those folks. Uh, and I'm very grateful that they were willing to put in their time and their effort and, and, and do that. What? There were a lot of challenges along the way, um, in replacing the six-hundred-page code um, that was very contradictory. And so a lot of discussion had to happen, uh, like Ivy was saying, to uh, to get the community to a place. We held, I don't even know how many different community engagement events. Many big ones, a lot of little ones. Um, we went out to different places in the community and held community engagement events uh, in their neighborhoods. We did personal invitations. Uh, we did mailers, we did all, all, all manner of things. We really put a big effort towards it. And um, and in the end, I want to say, I think it has really paid off. Uh, so for those of you that joined in the middle, I just want to reiterate, um, I'm also the chair of the planning board in Newcastle. And I, I just want to share a conversation that we had with our planning board, um, actually during our, our last planning board meeting. And I, and I noticed that my, my town planner is here with us, so he'll get a chuckle out of me telling the story. But uh, we were, we have a new group, we adopted, we adopted our, our current, what's called the core zoning code, again, based on the place code library. Back in twenty-twenty, it went into effect. And uh, I've been the chair since a little before then. And, and so I have quite a bit of the history because I had a lot of experience working with the planning board and the land use ordinance before, under the old code. And now I've had quite a bit of experience under the new code, so the compare and contrast has been interesting. But because the old code was so difficult to administer, the attitude that passed uh, planning board iterations had sort of taken, guided by the intent that was sort of unwritten in that old code, was to um, basically say, uh, to whatever application came forward, uh, no. Uh, how, and, and, and planning board members, because they didn't really have an overarching view or understanding of that big convoluted code, would pick and choose individual pieces or standards um, as a way to um, discourage projects from moving forward. So we have a long history in Newcastle of, of very contentious planning board meetings um, where applicants were trying to do projects and, and the planning board was essentially saying, no, you, you pretty much can't do anything and we're gonna just shut you down. And I'm sure that this is a familiar story in a lot of towns, um, for one reason or another. And I know the, the push-pull is different in every community, but um, that's where we were. And if you compare and contrast that uh, experience on the planning board then, um, or going to the planning board as an applicant, let's say, to coming to the planning board now, um, because we've adopted a code that is clear and concise, uh, all of the standards, um, and I'll show you this in a little bit, but all of the standards have uh, things like uh, statements of purpose and applicability uh, that are clearly written out, not just the standard itself, but this is the intent of the standard and this is where it applies and this is how it applies. Uh, the conversations, because of the work we put in and the way that the code is written, the conversations of the planning board have morphed and it's been fascinating to watch. Now, when applicants come to uh, the planning board in Newcastle, the planning board is actively engaged in trying to figure out, using the code, because it's very flexible, how to get the applicant's project approved. And so we're working with the applicant, and there's been work that's been done before, our town planner will have met with the applicant, you know, before and prepared all kinds of uh, documents for us to review and everything. But when we get to the actual meeting, planning board members are uh, actively engaged in using the code as a tool to help not just, and, you know, uh, approve projects, uh, but also like promote the town. It's a wonderful thing to watch and um, all of our, all of our planning board meetings are on, on YouTube. If you, if you are interested in what I'm talking about, you can go and look at uh, at the town of Newcastle YouTube website and, and see our last planning board meeting, because it, you know, I know these things are kind of dry, but uh, that was kind of a hoop. So, um, so if you're, if you're interested in the, in the, in the, why does this matter and what So if you're, if you're interested in the, in the, in the, why does this matter and what can you accomplish with it? I would say that. Form-based codes, when, when, when used and considered properly. Like we're trying to do with the place code library, we're putting that forward as a tool you can use to maybe change the narrative in your town. Another great story I want to tell before we dive in is. Following on the heels of that planning board story, we had an application at. For a project for some affordable housing in our, I guess it would be. T three district, let's say, neighborhood district near to downtown. Called sixteen Mills Road and it was for sixteen affordable housing units. And I told the story at Build Main recently and I just wanted to share it again, but. The application process for that whole thing took. From start to finish. From the time of the application, you know, hit the planning department desk. What I say is it took about fifteen. Minutes to review and fifteen days to approve. When I told that story of Build Main, I had a developer that I'd spoken to before the presentation, his jaw dropped. I mean, his jaw just hit the floor and he's used to long planning board meetings, you know, over many, many months to get projects approved. And he just, he, he didn't believe me. But the reality is because we had put so much work into front-loading our standards. It was very easy to look at the application, any application, say, yes, 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 that check, 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 check. Meets all the standards, you know, it's very easy to approve and then we're not arguing about. The definitions of things, we're not arguing about what the intent of this standard is, we know what it is. Because it's clearly written down. It's been a huge fundamental shift for us and the only reason that it took fifteen days to approve that application is because. There was a subdivision component to it and so that had to go through notice. And through public hearing. If there hadn't been a subdivision application, that would have been handled internally. Very, very quickly, days instead of weeks and so that's the kind of thing that you can accomplish, I think, when you, when you consider a shift from. Maybe the way you have been doing it to, to, to a style more similar to this. Alright, enough of the storytelling. I'm going to dive into the structure of the place code library, so. It is broken out just like any other ordinance into other articles or sections, however you want to describe it. We have a section on general standards, very short, that's usually where your map will live. Then we have district standards, building standards, use standards and development standards. Administration definitions. Two things stand out for me. One, a lot of codes tend to put their definitions at the beginning. When we were. Developing the code. The conversation was. That a lot of people tend to put, they, they put the destination at the beginning because those are the things that are important. Unfortunately, what ends up happening is standards end up getting written into those definitions and that's maybe not the best place for those standards. The standards should probably live in other sections, discrete sections that are about those things, so you don't have to constantly be. Flipping back and forth between this definition and that definition to find out what all the standards for things are. So in, in the place code library, the definitions, they exist in the back in a separate article, just called definitions and none of those. Definitions should contain any language about like a standard, it's just defining language. For what it is. So if you're curious about what something is, you can go there, read the actual definition, but it's not going to contain standards. The other thing is, we have an article called Article Five Development Standards. Most folks I think are probably used to a section called site standards. And site plan review, that is contained within development standards, but. It's a little bit bigger and I'll show you that later because it contains some other things like neighborhood standards and civic spaces and things. That might not typically fall under the term of site standards, so. So. I'm gonna try and I'm gonna stop sharing this and I'm actually gonna go over and I'm gonna. Show you the code as it exists. Over on Notion real quick so that everyone can see it and I just wanna, wanna bear with me while I do this here. Stop sharing that, I'm gonna share. That. Okay, great. Can everybody see that now? We good?
Yep.
Thank you. Alright, so this is the home of the main place code library on Notion. And I spoke about why we hosted it on Notion before, but as you can see. You've got, oh, I wanted to touch on this. We do have this guide right here at the beginning, before we get to the articles, we've got a guide. That tells you and if this can load up. It walks you through kind of what we're doing here today, an introduction to the place code. And why it's needed. This is a great read, how to get started using it. How it works. And what the elements are and then at the bottom it has some, some examples of how you might use it. And so this is, this is a really great read. If you read nothing else, this will get you nicely acquainted with the place code library. And the different facets of it. But I'm gonna walk through some of them for you right now. One of the biggest things, and I'm gonna jump right to Article Three Building Standards because. I think this is one of the most fun things is. This, the place code library is a building type code, so that means that we think about. Or the, the code thinks about things in terms of buildings, primary buildings and accessory buildings. And I'm going to show you a house. Because we're gonna have that a little bit later in the presentation. So this is the, the code page for a house. And as you can see, it's got, you know, just tables about, standard tables for the building form. This is what Ivy was talking about. Minimum and maximums of, you know, stories and things like that, the different types of roofs that are permitted or not permitted on a house. Massing components, I'll get to what those are and architectural components same. But. Each of these building type pages. Contain these very basic. Tables that allow you to understand what's permitted very easily, but. On the Notion site here, it also allows you, you can see some of these are linked. So you can go, let's go to connector real quick. You can quickly navigate the code by jumping around, following these links. So if you're in a house and you're wondering, okay, I can use a connector, but what's a connector? You just click on it, there it is. Very easy and then through this breadcrumb up here, you can jump back to where you were. Or other sections of the code. So one of the things, let's see, I've got that and then I wanted to show you a district real quick because. That's so here are our districts and Ivy had mentioned special districts, so we've got some special districts built in. Your town mayor may not have these and again, that's fine. The idea here is. To analyze what would work for your town and, and take the good parts. But I'll go here and I'll take a look at a T four general neighborhood because. A lot of folks have that in their town. It's like a village neighborhood, so it's got a description, it's got a statement of purpose. There's the buildings that are allowed in that district. And accessory buildings. Now this can be calibrated to your town. These are not hard set things. You're gonna look a little bit differently, it may have different building types in it. You may want to have a district where you specifically do not permit, not allow a certain building type and that's. And the code is meant to be taken and calibrated to your specific on-the-ground. Conditions, so, excuse me, we'll go back from district because I want to show you one of the most fun things. This is probably the thing people are used to from, from a use perspective here, is this use table. But I wanted to show you it because it's, it's really powerful here in Notion. This is a standard use table. You've got a list of uses running down the left-hand side and then you've got a list of districts running across the top. And they say whether it's permitted, not permitted and how, how it could be permitted. But in Notion here, you can click on one of these definite, one of these. On the side here and quickly see what the definition is. And if there's any standards that follow along with that use type. Can also easily see which districts it's permitted or not permitted or how it's permitted. Which I think is really fun, so if you, if you, you know, I say, well. From this, you know, what districts can I have a hotel in instead of scrolling all the way over here and trying to figure out where your page is? You can do this little peek view here, which I think is great because it gives you a lot of good information. The other really powerful thing is you can. Look at the use cards, which just has a big list of all the definitions of the different types of uses. But this is the power here, so let's go to that T four district at the top. If you live in the T four district, you can go to this page and you can say, okay, what's allowed in my district? Well, these are all the things that are allowed in this T four district. It's quite a few. But also here's the list of things that are not permitted. Residential companion is another term that we like to use instead of home occupation, so here's the things that can be done. Under that type of permit and these are the types of things that require a special permit and it's very easy to flip back and forth and see those things. So that's kind of fun. It's a little bit more functional and I think it highlights the strength of. Of the digital platform. To represent this in paper would not be possible or very, very difficult and require a lot of paper. So this is, this is a fun feature, I think, and we've got some other. Excuse me, we've got some other sections of the codes that use that same type of database style approach. To. Laying out what could be complex ideas. So then I wanted to just quickly show you development standard section because I spoke about it earlier, the site standards, these, these are kind of the things that normally you might expect to see under a, you know, a site. Review, but we've also got these neighborhood standards, including civic spaces and accessory civic spaces. And then we also have standards for streets, so this is trying to bring in the idea of complete streets. And we'll get to that a little bit later at the end of the presentation. What complete streets, if you're not familiar with it is, if you are, you'll understand right away. Complete streets essentially is just. The idea that everything has a place on the street, whether you're a pedestrian, riding a bike, in a car. Or on the sidewalk and so. That is a quick. Quick run through the code. I am gonna jump back to the main presentation, but I also wanted to just show you there are these resource links down here. Here we'll have a. Hello? I think I dropped off.
We can hear you now, Ben.
Okay, so what was the last thing you heard me say?
Resource links.
Thank you. So no, I didn't, you didn't hear anything about the signup form?
Nope.
Okay. So under the resource links, not only can you see a list of events that we're gonna, upcoming events that we're gonna have, but also a guide on how to comment. You do need to sign up for a free Notion account, but if you do, you can leave some fun comments and I wanted to show you one of them real quick. And under building height. Oh, no, sorry. Where did that go?
We're not seeing your screen share anymore.
Oh, shoot, hold on just a second. Oh, when it disconnected me, it stopped the screen share. I apologize, folks. Hold on a second. Technical difficulties, you gotta love it, right? How about now? Does that work?
Yep.
Okay, thank you. Sorry about that, folks. It's a beautiful day out, so I have no idea why the internet would have. phased out. And now I forget where I was. Oh, sign up and downloads. If you sign up through here, you'll receive an email. Welcoming you to the library community and it'll include some links to download, so that's how to do that. There's also a list of contributors, there's a lot over the years and our license and so on and so forth. Alright, so I'm gonna stop sharing that and I'm gonna go back to the main presentation and keep going. Hold on just a second. Okay. Are we good?
Yep.
Thank you. Okay. Where was I? Okay, structure, Notion site, alright. So. There are some core features. I'm gonna really touch on these at kind of a high level. Next couple of sessions are gonna do a little bit more of a deep dive. They are gonna do a deep dive on these. And other sections of the code, so this is high-level stuff. Just introductory to the concepts and to the formatting and layout of the code, so. The library does rest on several core features. Districts, which Ivy explains are, are based on the transect. They're not transects, but the, you know, we call them districts, but they are based on the idea of the transect, that there's that continuum from rural to urban. Like I said before, it is a building type code, so building types are one of the primary. Features of the code, they help. Regulate things. Again, like Ivy was speaking in the beginning, instead of strictly from the idea of what uses are allowed. What types of buildings and forms are we gonna allow in different parts of town? And then let's talk about the uses for those districts in those buildings. So uses do come into it, but after the idea of like, let's regulate the form first. One of the ways to do that is to understand how building types and components, which are additional elements that modify, so how do you, how do you modify? How do you think about the additions and the different types of both massing and architectural components? That go onto a house to create what we think of as a normal house and I'll explain more of that in a minute, so if you're confused in the moment, don't worry, we'll get there. And then roof types, roofs are an important part of how the code works. If you think about, excuse me, if you think about building a house. From scratch, you know, you build it up, you put the roof on it, then you add all the different components that would. Like if you've got a deck, if you've got a bay window, if you've got a. You know, a, a rear sort of addition or something like that, those are all standard ways that we talk about houses. And that's what we've tried to do in the code is make it really easy using common language to understand how to put a house together. And it's a different way of thinking about. Regulating form for a zoning code. The, the last two thoroughfare types, that's the complete streets idea that I was talking about earlier and I'll show you just a little bit of that. And then building groups, which is a unique tool. That essentially allows. More flexible uses and greater density in rural areas that may not be allowed by the base zoning. So that's a fascinating concept we'll unpack near the end. So again, districts are based on the transect, that, that continuum of rural to urban. And as we think about defining those districts, what we're really talking about is the, is the character of those districts. We're not, we're not worried so much about like if this is the commercial zone or if this is the residential zone. And I'll give you a great example, in Newcastle, if you have ever been here. We have a street called Glidden Street. It's just off of our downtown, which if you blink, you'll miss it because we don't really have one. Part of our code was aimed at creating a downtown or setting the stage in our zoning to allow for a downtown to exist where one currently doesn't really exist. But Glidden Street is, it's got a lot of older houses, ship captains' houses, federals and colonials. It's what we would call one of our historic districts in terms of the. Type, its size and style of the houses that are there. And it's one of the streets that a lot of people would point to in town and say, this has a unique character. The character of Glidden Street is really important. We want to protect it because we really like the way it feels. And as Ivy was alluding to, we were talking about earlier. The way that a district like Glidden Street feels. Under a form-based code is something that can be quantified. You can actually go to Glidden Street, we did this. And you can measure, you can measure how far the houses are set back from the road, you can measure how far they are apart from each other. That'll sort of clue you into, well, what size lots do we want to allow in this district? You look at the types of houses, well, there's federals and colonials, well, we're not gonna regulate and say you can only build federals and colonials. But we might say, look, there are no houses with flat roofs in this district. Is that an important element that we need to add to our code? Turns out, yes, it was really important, so we don't allow flat roofs on houses. In, in the Glidden Street Historical District. But we do, you know, we can say you built a house. But we're not gonna tell you it has to be. A federal or a colonial, for example. So it's general building types, not specific, so we're not talking about specific. Like ranch or cape or anything like that. We're talking about very general concepts in terms of building types. So. This is what we're, this is building types. So these standardized forms that we've got and I, and I think I got a note here, I counted them up, we have twenty-one. Primary building types in the library. primary building types in the library right now, and we have six accessory building types. Uh, the difference is obviously the primary building is usually the one that contains the primary use. It's the largest building on the lot. It's the one that addresses the street most formally in more um urban districts. And the difference between the different building types is how they regulate different form and scale, right? So um while we've got the standardized forms, the scale and size of the buildings, the elements that you put on them could be different in different districts based on community desire or the type of building that it is or the building type that it is. All of this adds up, like I was saying before, if you have standardized forms of building types, you regulate those forms and scale. You have flexible uses that are allowed in there. Um, it really does streamline the approval process phenomenally. So I chose four building types that are common to Maine, I think. Uh, to show you real quick, a house, a cottage, a small apartment building and a mixed-use building. Excuse me. And I'll walk through those um real quick with these slides. So this is a picture from the, from the code of a house. You can see it's just a wireframe drawing and um. So that's important because I want to highlight something that was uh a major point of contention uh in Castle when we went through the process of building our code and adopting it. The picture that you see here, this wireframe is intended to be representational. It's not meant to be um something that you must conform to. Not every house has to look exactly like this. This is a generic representation that could take the form of a ranch. It could be that colonial or federal. It could be a Greek revival. Um, it could be any of those architectural styles. Again, we're not regulating those architectural styles. We're talking about a generic type of a house. And one of the biggest arguments that we had in our thirteen-person committee uh was actually over terminology. Uh, and I can't emphasize enough how much the words you use um set the stage for the concepts in people's minds. So as you go through community engagement process, you start building out your ordinance, the language that you use and, and planners, I think unfortunately are guilty of this pretty often. We use a lot of planner speak, uh so I apologize if I'm, if I'm using terminology that is not familiar. I know a lot of you will be familiar with it, but um, when we got to the idea of a house, it was actually difficult for people to wrap their mind around the idea that we're talking about a generic concept. Uh, not a specific concept. And so I would say the word house and the person to the right of me would, in their mind, would imagine a ranch. No person to the left would imagine a cape. And they thought those were incompatible ideas. And so, boy, the, the level of time it took to get to folks to understand that this is just a generic concept was, it took a long time. Ultimately, what it resulted in, and this I find hysterical to this day, is we removed all the images from, from our, from our code. So the core zoning code in Newcastle as it exists right now, you know, I just showed you the, the place code library and it has images and graphics and all scattered throughout um to, you know, explain the concepts we're talking about. We removed all of those. So Newcastle has a fully form-based code that covers the entirety of the town in Newcastle, including the rural area, and not a single graphic in it. Which I find hysterical. We've, we, we've now spent five years with this code and we're at the point where we realize um planning board members and community members and applicants realize those diagrams are actually probably really helpful. We've had a couple of fun applications where um trying to understand concepts like frontage to folks uh gets confusing if you don't have a diagram that shows you what that means. So we're in the process of adding them back in, uh some of them. Uh, but it just goes to show, I think, that the flexibility of the concepts of a form-based code um are such that you can have a form-based code without any graphics at all whatsoever, although every other form-based code that I've seen in existence uh has, has, has a lot of graphics and a lot of images and a lot of diagrams. So the house uh is a detached structure primarily for residential use, typically one to two stories. Um, and it's an adaptable, like I said, architectural style. So next we have the cottage, uh very similar to a house, it's just smaller in scale. Uh, typically a story or a story and a half, smaller width, smaller depth on a smaller lot, um unless it's um viewed have an accessory dwelling, uh accessory building type, sorry, accessory building type for that called a back cottage. Um, for those, you know, ADUs. A small apartment building, again, um sorry, is a more of a moderately scaled building, um strictly residential in use. Um, full of uh residential dwelling units, um typically two to four stories in height, and again, various architectural styles. Mixed-use building, this is the fun one because this can take so many different shapes and sizes in um downtown areas where you would see it, there's a required uh shopfront component so that you've got that um addressing the street where it, a mixed-use building would sit um on or near the sidewalk so that you've got that nice, you know, window shopping effect when you walk down the street. Um, so it can be utilized in di- districts from T three to uh to T six. So that's, you know, a neighborhood to, and it can be very small to a very large building in, in the T six district if, if that's what's needed. And, and again, it contains mixed-use commercial and usually residential above. So one of the stories that I do like to tell is about our neighboring town, Damariscotta. If you've been to Damariscotta, you'll know that it's a quaint little typical New England village. It's very walkable. Um, and it's full of mixed-use buildings, uh right on the street with that commercial ground floor, big windows, uh and then apartments all above. And uh that was all built long before Damariscotta ever implemented any kind of zoning or adopted any kind of zoning. When they got around to doing zoning, like a lot of us did in the seventies, uh their zoning unfolded in, in the same way that Ivy was talking about where um their current, I believe this is still true, their current ordinances, land use ordinances, would not allow them to build their own downtown. And unfortunately, I think that's true for a lot of Maine communities. Um, a lot of Maine communities that have that beautiful walking downtown that we all know and love to visit. Um, I jokingly say, you know, in Maine, we vacation we vacation to these other beautiful towns, like we'll take a weekend and we'll go visit Belfast or we'll go to Camden. And the reason we go to those downtowns is because they feel great. They're wonderful to walk around in and, and play tourist in your own state. Um, you know, going to Bar Harbor and, and going to, um, you know, Freeport. They have a certain feel which can be quantified, it can be understood, um but unfortunately a lot of the, a lot of these small towns uh and villages that we, we cherish are operating under ordinances that wouldn't allow them to be built from scratch if they had it to do all over again. Uh, so one of the goals for Newcastle was looking at our neighbor across the river and saying, we want that. How do we get that? And uh, and this is where we landed. Uh, so understanding the main mass of a building, this is, this is one of the key concepts in the place code library. It's fundamental to understanding that what we're talking about when we talk about a, um, like a building type is we're really talking about the main mass of the building. So the, the image you see on the left, the wireframe you see on the left, that's just the basic box of a building, length, depth, height. Height in the code is actually measured in terms of stories, not a static number. We don't say thirty-five feet max in this district. We say number of stories. And the fun thing about that is that stories are measured from, you know, the ground you know, floor of one story to the, the top of the story above you. Uh, but the, under a roof, that doesn't count as a story. So your standard Cape Cod style, architectural style building that is one story. It would be considered one story under the main place code library, because even though you walk up the stairs, you've got the bathroom in front of you, you've got bedrooms to either size, total living space. We don't consider that two stories or you're in a story and a half. It's just a one-story building, even though you've got that living space under the roof. So how you, if you just have that basic mass and then you have these components, and the middle diagram here is showing you, that wireframe is showing you how you would attach or understand or deconstruct a pre-existing building um by saying the main mass is just the building that's not highlighted. The mass that is highlighted, that's actually a side wing. So we've got standards for side wing and how that works and how that might be regulated, sorry. Um, and then uh the diagram on the far right is a, is a architectural component called a porch. Uh, and that's um how you can add um buildings to, uh sorry, components to main masses of buildings. Why that's important is because if you see a standard that says uh building can only be fifty feet wide, people will come and they'll slap down their architectural plan and say, well, I've got a building and I've got a connector and I've got a garage next to it. And if you measure all the way across the front, it's, you know, seventy-five, eighty feet or whatever the case may be, but your your standard here in your, in your code says you can only be fifty feet wide. Well, the fifty feet only refers to the main mass of the building, not the entirety. That's an important distinction. Components, components are secondary building elements. We divide them into two categories, massing, which affect the overall form of the thing, overall form of the main mass of the building, usually containing um additional living spaces. It adds to the main mass of the building interiorly. Architectural components are, are more like details. So in the picture here, we've actually got a few. We've got a porch on the front, we've got a bay window on the right, and we've got three dormer windows. Those are all components uh that are added to the main mass itself. You subtract those, all you've got is the main mass on the roof. So massing components, I'm gonna show you three, side wing, rear addition and connector. Side wing, we've already talked about a little bit. Um, the idea is it's either a single or a multi-story expansion from the sidewall of a primary or accessory building and it expands the habitable air, habitable area of the functional space. It's integrated. And that's that's an important concept in terms of how you put buildings together. A rear addition, same as a side addition, it's got very similar characteristics. It's again, how you go about creating more mass. A connector, um which everybody knows is a very typical Maine building standard is to have, you know, your garage sitting next to your house, so you make a breezeway. That breezeway is either, it's covered usually, but you know, it's either got screens or it's, you know, connected because you want that. Um, you, you built it for three seasons, then you wanted to insulate it, so, or you've got some nice living space out there. Um, but we've got standards for how you, how you do those connections. And these are some of the common applications for how you use those connectors to connect to a house, a gar- a house to a garage, to a barn, to an L or an office or studio or something like that. And later on, I'll show you one of the most common historical patterns of development in New England and Maine is the, the big house, little house, back house, barn pattern. And using a connector is one of the ways to accomplish that. Architectural components, like I said before, they are the things that you add on, but don't necessarily add to the um habitable living space. They seem to, like um a bay window, which projects from the facade of the building. Um, it adds some space, but it's not living space necessarily. We don't consider it that way. It doesn't add mass. It adds features. Uh, same for dormer windows, porches, et cetera. So um here is an example of a shed dormer. Um, it's a dormer with a shed roof on it. And um, so there's, there's standards in the shed dormer component page that show you where, you know, the, the standards for the placement of it, the dimensions of it. Um, and we don't get into, um, again, it's very generic. It's not designed to tell you specifically what you can do, but I will tell you why something like this is important. I'll give you a great example. If you've ever driven Route One from Newcastle to Wiscasset. Right before you get to the Wiscasset Bridge, and I wish I had a picture to show you, but if you can picture in your mind, if you've ever been there, there was this single-story, commercial-style building on the left that a couple of years ago, somebody new bought it and they decided we want to add uh some flair to the building. So they created these, we're gonna, we're gonna put some uh gabled, I'm sorry, no, gambrelled uh roofs on these dormers, big dormers. Well, the dormers themselves, because I couldn't figure out how to do it, the dormers themselves extend, the peak of the dormer extends two or three feet higher than the peak of the main roof that the dormer is attached to. And as you're driving up from the side, it looks absolutely ridiculous uh to have, and I think there's either two or three of them. They're huge, monstrous things. And if they had had any standards that told them, look, you can do that dormer with that style roof, fine, no problem. It just can't exceed uh the, the peak can't exceed the peak of the main roof that it's attached to. Simple as that. Um, it, it would have produced a much better um building than what they ended up with. Uh, and I, I don't know how it came to be, uh but that's the kind of thing where you're you're looking at the character of a district and you're saying, well, uh you know, do we want to allow people to do whatever they want to be able to do, which, hey, I'm all in favor of personal property rights uh with reason. And so having those simple reasonable things uh written into your code that, that just says, yeah, dormers probably shouldn't extend above the peak of the main roof that it's attached to. It doesn't need to be a whole lot more complicated than that. Um, so that's what we're trying to accomplish there. Porches, uh porches, everybody's got a porch, right? Fundamental to Maine's architectural identity. Um, this porch is great because it's not above that three feet that would require it to have a um, you know, railing or anything around it. And they do, they create that semi-public transition zone between, you know, your inside living space and your outdoor living space. Architectural component bay window, talked about those before, and again, you can see here, this is actually a picture of three different components. We've got the bay windows. In between that, we've got a stoop, which is that little step up that all of us have are familiar with, with a little covered awning above it. And then three dormer windows in the roof above. So roof types, I'll touch on real quickly. Standardized configurations, how to enclose the upper part of the building. Uh, but they do significantly impact the building character. Um, and so again, going back to that example of the um Glidden Street and saying, we really don't want to have any flat roofs on buildings in that district. Um, this is how we accomplish that. If you define a set number of building types, gable, hip, gambrel, shed, um you can, you can say we don't want those. So for example, another example in Newcastle, the only place that we actually do allow flat roofs on single-unit commercial buildings. Uh, I think we all know what we're talking about, these, these boxing-type-looking buildings um that have the flat roofs. We only allow those in our uh highway commercial district, uh and I think maybe in our fabrication district. And that's pretty much it. We looked at flat roofs and said flat roofs can really detract from the character of a neighborhood. And when we posed it to the community, uh they agreed. They said, you know, look around. Almost all the houses have a standard gable roof or a hip or a gambrel, not as many of those. Um, and a lot of our additions have shed roofs on them, but uh almost none of our buildings in any of our districts, especially our neighborhood districts, none of those have flat roofs and it would change the feel of or character of the district such that we don't, we don't want to allow that. And uh, the other thing about flat ribs, I'll just say real quick, is if you have, if you're, if you're regulating from the perspective of use only and you're not really thinking about regulating from building types and roof types, and you allow those single-unit commercial flat roof buildings to pop up here, there and everywhere, that is a specifically difficult type of building for any kind of adaptive reuse. So if, you know, any one of the chain stores or whatever goes into one of those buildings, um when they leave, you can see it happen around different communities where another use will try to go in there, another commercial use will try to use it. But um oftentimes those don't seem to succeed as well, and those buildings can sit empty for a while until someone figures out a use that goes in there. Uh, and, and so it's kinda, it's, if you allow that type of building with that particular roof anywhere, uh you may be stuck with it for a while when you're trying to anywhere, uh, you may be stuck with it for a while when you're trying to, you know, uh, rebuild a neighborhood that's maybe fallen um, into disuse, or you're trying to do some adaptive reuse, or you're, anything like that, so. Um, moving on. Gable roof, well, probably most classic form in Maine. Now we get to building groups, building groups. So this says, define how multiple buildings can be arranged in relation to other creating harmless compositions. The way I think about building groups is, is, and these are the three building groups that are in the place code library. The way I think about them is, like I said before, they're really a way to add uh, more buildings and potentially more uses to an area where the base zoning may not necessarily allow that amount of development on a single lot. Uh, so if it's in, if it's in single ownership, um, you can create these, you know, the cottage court idea. I think a lot of people are familiar with that. I'm not gonna touch on that too much, but the small and large rural compound, the idea is that if you are in a rural area, rural district and you have a larger lot, um, for a small rural compound, it, it's the only place in the library that it regulates the minimum lot size required, which is actually important. I'll go back and I'll say, uh, currently, none of the districts in the place code library regulate minimum lot size at all. That's a major change from standard use-based ideology where we're very focused on the size of the lot, controlling the size of the lot uh, in different districts. Um, in the place code library, none of those districts uh, have any minimum lot size whatsoever. And when we start talking about small, large rural compounds, we recognize that to get that intensity of use, you might see in a large rural compound that has um, big agricultural buildings, you know, maybe it's a farm or some other type of um, situation like here in Newcastle, we have um, Oxbow Brewing. Um, it has a lot of outbuildings kinda next to it if ever visited. It's a, it's a great place to chill out, have a beer. They got a lot of different buildings on the same lot. And we said, how are we gonna be able to permit all those in a rural district? Where typically rural districts are reserved for that single-family dwelling units that Ivy was talking about. And um, but we heard from our residents, a couple of, a couple of things I think a lot of other communities have heard, and they initially on hearing them, you, you think that these are incompatible, but a lot of people would say, when we asked them, you know, what, what is, what is rural? Or what, what do you wanna be able to uh, have regulated or not regulated in rural? They said, well, um, we wanna be able to do whatever we wanna be able to do. We want, you know, total freedom. Great, I hear that, that's, that's fine. Um, let's talk more about that so we can understand it. But then the other thing they would say is, we don't want anything to change. And so from a planner perspective, you go, well, wait a minute. Um, if you don't want anything to change, but you wanna be able to do whatever you wanna be able to do, that doesn't seem like that's very um, compatible ideology, right? Um, if you're allowed to just do whatever you wanna do and everyone's allowed to do whatever they wanna do, everything's gonna change, not nothing. Uh, so we beat our heads against that rock for a long time, months and months and months. Until what we realized they were saying was it wasn't necessarily that they didn't want anything to change specifically. They didn't want the character of their district to change. They wanted to be allowed to do quote-unquote, whatever they wanna be able to do without affecting the underlying character of the district. And so that's the challenge. How do you keep rural rural? And so this concept of having a small rural compound or a large rural compound evolved to allow to have that greater density, more buildings on a lot. And in turn, we were able to say, if you do that and you have those five acres for a small rural compound or ten acres for a large rural compound, uh, you can have all these other types of building types that you can put on there, not just a few that are generally allowed in rural. But we'll also allow all these different types of uses, that brewery, um, that brewery and a restaurant use. Or that brewery and a restaurant that wants to have live music. Typically, those things aren't really, um, you know, allowed in rural, but we will find them in rural. So we found that we had a bunch of uses uh, that wouldn't be strictly classified as rural uses necessarily. Uh, taking place in rural areas, and we wanted to figure out how to make them uh, compliant. We didn't wanna set forth a code that made those uses non-conforming. Uh, so we invented this, uh, this idea of these compounds and it's a great tool. Uh, we actually, through the planning board process, have uh, had some great conversations with applicants who've come forth with some subdivision um, applications. Uh, for a typical, you know, subdivision sort of nineteen-eighties style, maybe a cul-de-sac with, you know, a whole bunch of little lots and things like that. And we were able to educate them a little bit about saying, about, about these rural compounds, saying, look, if you maybe thought about your subdivision slightly differently, you could potentially unlock a lot more value for, you know, potential owners. If you increased the lot sizes so that it could fit within the parameters of either a small or a large rural compound and then following some, um, you know, street standards and things like that, could make this um, have a character that fits in better with a rural area without creating those typical um, you know, nineteen-eighties-style suburban sprawl subdivisions. Um, you know, without having to come out and say that directly to the applicant. It was a great conversation, so um, we had a couple of pre-submitting meetings for those um, subdivision applications. We had that conversation and uh, and, and eventually a couple of them came back with altered plans for their subdivision because they wanted to take advantage of this uh, possibility. And now we've got some of those lots for sale. Uh, and I think it's resulted in a better uh, representation of what the residents of Newcastle wanted uh, to preserve the character of their rural district, so. Enough about building uh, groups. All right, so how do you put all these concepts together? Um, very simple little infographic here. Uh, you start with a building type, put a roof on it, add different massing components, architectural components. Consider putting it into a building group if you're in a rural area for that small and large rural um, compound. And that's sort of the quick and dirty of how you would either evaluate an existing building or consider building a new building in a district. So I showed you the development standard section of the uh, place code library on the Notion site. And um, and what would be considered, excuse me, those site review uh, sections as well as some of the other sections that are a little bit different. Um, it does have some language about, you know, again, proportion and scale, but also materials and color. Um, site design and architectural details um, for uh, that as well as thoroughfare types. So this goes to that concept of uh, complete streets where everyone that's using the street has got some place on the street, um, you know, for their activity, whether you're a pedestrian, uh, bicyclist, uh, um, you know, in a, in a, in a motor vehicle. Uh, and it, and it has standards for each of these different thorough types to promote healthy use of streets uh, in districts, um, and adaptive um, rethinking of streets that maybe aren't the best for one reason or another. Um, so we have standards about adding, you know, things like street trees um, and those shared bicycle lanes or different um, standards for sidewalks and promoting um, you know, that full concept of, of, of a street use. This is a, people who have ever heard about complete streets have probably seen this before. Um, this is sort of one of those standard graphics that you've seen before, where it's just showing everybody has a, a place on the street. Um, and I, I like that quote where complete streets approach integrates people and place in the planning, design, construction, operation and maintenance of our transportation network. So um, we in Newcastle are um, gonna, we, we've been heavily investing in our road infrastructure. And this has uh, these concepts of ha- um, you know, come heavily into those conversations about, well, if we're gonna redo this road, is it important that we think about, you know, these other factors? Um, especially when considering like, you know, villages and downtowns. Um, having things like, you know, ADA crosswalks, well, that's actually really important for a lot of folks who spend a lot of time walking uh, downtown and it makes the village more accessible and also more enjoyable. Um, so thinking about all those things uh, has been a, has been a benefit. So a lot of that thinking is baked right into the place code library. So this is that example I was talking about, it's just two quick slides about how you do the big house, little house, back house, barn. Um, very traditional New England pattern of development where you've got a house and uh, you know, later, I don't know, say uh, great aunt Ethel dies and, and leaves the family uh, her house. But uh, this is back in the eighteen hundreds and so they moved it and they attached it. You know, they floated it over the river, wherever the case may be, and they attached it to the back of their existing house because, you know, they were expecting their sixth child or whatever the case may be, they needed more space. And uh, and then, you know, there was a barn back there, so and, and eventually they connected that back house to the barn with a connector or another little cottage. Uh, and you see this all over the place. Uh, and this is the, this is the typical pattern. So how that would work in the place code library is through these different types of building types or massing components. You start with a big house, which for example could be house building type, a cottage or a bungalow. From there, you can put a rear addition or a connector that would connect you to the back house, which could be a cottage, bungalow, carriage house or a back cottage. And then that could be connected to, or maybe it already is connected to, or maybe it's built to connect to the barn or carriage house that may exist back there already. Um, so I can't even count the number of, of, of times this particular type of pattern development has been utilized in the town of Newcastle and all the surrounding towns. And uh, and it's just something that's sort of baked into our, I, our architectural DNA in New England, I think. And so we in the place code library specifically created something called the connected farm. It is a primary building type, not a building group, because it's all interiorly connected. And you could walk inside from one end to the other through all these different, you know, building types and connectors without getting wet. So trying to sum up here, why use the place code library? These are four good reasons, I think, and, and I hope I've highlighted them as we've been going through. Consistency, um, one of the benefits of using building types, I think, is that while they're generic, they do provide you with the ability to um, have some confidence that development is gonna happen at a scale and pattern that is appropriate to the district that it's in, instead of haphazardly and um, you know, having the scale be all off. And that, again, that goes to affecting the character of the district. Um, clarity, the visual examples and the definitions throughout. One of the things that I, I have to emphasize is so important and so wonderful about the place code library is that for every standard written, it's got either a description or it's got a statement of purpose and applicability. Uh, and very often in like the Newcastle Planning Board meetings, uh, instead of um, debating and arguing about what uh, the intent of a specific standard means, we'll literally just go and we'll read that statement of purpose and applicability. And um, the, there, there's no, because there's no need to interpret, because it's all written down for you, uh, it is, it is what it is. It fits or it doesn't fit. Uh, but that takes us to the next point, which is that there's flexibility built into uh, how to think about different concepts. The building type approach where you have primary buildings, accessory buildings and the components, uh, it allows a great deal of flexibility in how you can think about putting together a project. Whether you're, you know, a designer, an architect, a planning board member, CEO, how you understand those things, it does provide a great deal of flexibility. We've had a lot of examples or um, instances where an application has come forward with a, a design. It was a very common scenario, they'll come to the planner or they'll come to the CEO and they'll say, can I build this? Uh, before they put in their application. And then we can, you know, look at it and say, well, this is really the main mass here. This is, you know, w- we think about this as a, it looks like it's not an addition, you're gonna build it at all the same time, it's all gonna be brand new. But this is what we would call a side wing addition. Component, massing component. And breaking it down that way, this is the style of roof, makes it very easy and clear to just check, check, check. Yeah, you made all the things or, you know, this doesn't quite match for whatever reason. And then it's a simple conversation with that applicant or the architect or designer um, to come into conformance, cause you can point to the very clear standard and say, these are the roof types that are allowed, these are the components that are allowed, and they go, great, I'll come back with a drawing that matches those. And uh, it makes approval process really, really efficient. So that's the last point. Uh, so benefits for different stakeholder holders, I touched on this. For residents, having that clear understanding of what can be built in their neighborhoods, that was the number one question we usually get eh, as we were going through the process of rewriting the code. Uh, but also when people buy land or they're thinking about buying land, that's their question, what can I do with this? With the place code library, you go to the district, you can see instantly, these are the building types that are allowed, you can go look at those. These are the components. It's very easy to understand exactly what can be built. And using that use table, it's also very easy to show you what uses can be done. So uh, clear um, standards, very, very helpful. Again, designers and developers, I think, really appreciate this, those that I've shared this with or been um, privileged enough to uh, do application process with them. They've pretty much to a person made comments about how wonderful the process is because those clear standards. Um, they know what they're expecting when they come to the meeting, uh, they all have, you know, looked over the code and said, addressed each of the things, it's, it's a wonderful process. And then uh, for municipalities on the, on the enforcement side, it's really easy to not have any, any level of interpretation or any amount of, uh, well, we gotta figure that out. It's just clear, unlike certain things like shoreline, but I won't go into that. Uh, so how to access the place code library, it's all online. Um, it is searchable, it's wonderfully searchable. If you visit it, it's right there, mainplacecode.notion.site. You sign up for a free Notion account, you can leave comments. Um, and then if you sign up for that, um, uh, through the signup form, you can get it in downloads. Uh, and it's full of examples and uh, our plan moving forward with the place code will be to develop toolkits or packages uh, that, that solve different scenarios. I spoke about this earlier, um, like a missile, missing mill, mill housing package. Um, rural zoning package, that's sort of a light and condensed version of the place code that maybe doesn't need everything. So those packages and toolkits are gonna be rolling out, so if you sign up, you'll receive notification in your email about updates and changes that are happening to the place code. And, oops, sorry. And then um, this is just a list of some other things that we've got there. Um, examples and community resources, participation opportunities like the event we're doing today. And there's gonna be, I think, one next week and one the week after, is that the plan? Um, where, yeah.
There's one next week, which is more in-depth for people who uh, wanna get uh, more into the nitty-gritty. You won't get the history piece, you'll get more about how to use it. Um, and then the week after that is a really deep dive for people who are ready to start becoming uh, savants about the main place code. So that's the plan. Um, and I had my hand up only because I wanted to say a thing that you just said, but I'm gonna say it again because it's important. Uh, you don't have to use the whole thing. You don't have to use the whole thing. You can start uh, in your place, using the place code as to create a patch. You've got a place where you're pretty sure that you're gonna get some development and you wanna make sure that you don't get stupid big box suburban store sprawl. You can create a, you know, you can create code for that place that uses the buildings that you wanna see there set on the lots the way you want them to fit. Um, and I can't emphasize enough the sort of metrics piece of this that the way to make this work is to choose a good example. I was talking to Ben yesterday and I forgot to send him the photograph, so we don't have them today. But I wrote a little pad, code patch, oh gosh, uh, six or seven years ago for the town I live in. And we wanted to allow small lots, small house development. And I took uh, a place in the town, two towns over from me, I took Peanut Row in Harrisville, which is a row of six little cottages that were built as mill housing in eighteen ninety-five, and I measured it. I measured how much, uh, how wide the lots were. I measured how wide the houses were. I measured how far they set back from the back of the road. And I used those numbers and I created a code that allowed that place to be replicated. And in the town I live in, it has been replicated three times. And they look like a million dollars. They look great. People love them. The houses never go on the open market. They get passed hand to hand. So that careful attention to what it is that you want um, seems fussy, but that's the thing that makes this work and create places that people love. And when we first proposed, um, that neighbor, that, that piece of code is called the traditional neighborhood overlay zone. And when we first proposed it, people lost their minds. They're like, oh my God, 5,000 square foot lots, 50 foot fronted. It's gonna be terrible. It's gonna be awful. And I'm like, just wait a minute. And now we have three great examples. And so you know, when people come in and say, this is what I wanna do, as Ben says, it goes through the planning board lot faster. And the other thing, of course, is that you wanna make things by right as fa- as fast as you can. And, you know, depending on your town, the appetite for making things by right may be greater or lesser, but the sooner that you can get to saying, this is legally allowed as long as you follow the rules, no special exception, no conditional use permit, no 14 planning board meetings, the better, the faster you'll get the place that you want. So.
So, uh, just touching on that real quick. And then we wanna wrap up for, um, questions and answers, if there are any here. Um, everyone might be familiar with the main company Mexicali Blues. They're headquartered here in Newcastle. And a few years ago, when they were um, thinking about doing a major warehouse expansion, uh, the code here in Newcastle, the new code was one of the primary motivations, as well as wanting to stay close to their root, roots, roots, I'm sorry. Uh, but we were able to permit a, uh, eighty by a hundred and sixty foot warehouse building for them in our commercial, uh, highway district, uh, in one meeting of the planning board. And, uh, and it, it was no problem at all. And, uh, compare and contrast that to some other experiences we had in the past, um, it, it was great. So that is sort of the thing that, that, that Ivy, I think was talking about. So. So, um, we've got more resources, obviously the library guide, the events and the contributors downloads like I talked about. Next steps, again, Ivy was talking about this, explore the library, assess local needs, customize the standards, steal away. Do your community engagement and then hopefully everything will go through implementation and adoption. Uh, again, I'll just make a plug for joining the community. Sign up using that form. Um, it's right there under signups and downloads, right on the notion site. You'll stay up to date with changes, so on and so forth, and get, um, you know, information about any upcoming changes and events. And there we go. I think we've got, yep, five minutes left till our pumpkin time. So if there are any questions, I'm gonna stop sharing my screen here. And if anyone's got a question, fire away. I can't see everybody that's in the zoom on my screen.
While people thinking I could just throw out one, um, which is, you know, how does uh, LD two thousand three and LD eighteen twenty-nine, if I got that number right, um, how does that interact with, um, the place code, something that's been a topic of discussion?
It has been a topic of discussion. So, um, form based codes are a little bit different, obviously from use based codes. They don't regulate density the same way. So, um, where you're not worried about minimum lot size, you're not worried about, potentially you're not worried about unit counts. You're more concerned about the form and scale of buildings. LD two thousand three in particular is really aimed at, um, you know, allowing those ADUs to exist. Uh, and they do, part of the way that LD two thousand three does that is by altering, um, the density uh, requirements for different, you know, for your districts by allowing, oops, sorry. By allowing, uh, greater density, uh, and, and those ADUs to be built. The place code library has that all kind of baked in already. So an ADU could take the form of, um, a cottage, a back cottage. Uh, and, and the standards for how that's placed on the lot and what the density could be, um, are expressed differently. And it's pretty much just allowed by right. Um, kind of in all districts when Newcastle went to do our LD two thousand three compliance, we found that we were already ninety-nine percent of the way there. Uh, we had to modify a few things. Um, originally our code did have unit counts and that could have been interpreted as a density metric. So we removed them. And now it's a, a pure form based code and, uh, and we, we meet LD two thousand three uh, sort of by default. Uh, instead of having to, you know, change our underlying code. So that was a very interesting experience, um, to go through. And does that answer your question?
I think so, but maybe others will have more.
Any other questions or thoughts? No questions. Thank you for taking the time. Absolutely. Thank you all for being here. Really appreciate the time and I can't believe the turnout. Um, very happy to see you all. I know some of you have signed up for the next event or the next two events. So come back, learn some more about the place code library. Uh, always any of us are available with our email links right on the website. So if you wanna contact us, shoot us an email. We're here to help. We're here to help you understand and encourage you to, uh, promote better zoning in Maine. That's the whole idea. Thank you again. And, uh, I guess if we don't have anything else, we'll say goodbye.
Thanks, everyone.